The August 11th, 2016 Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Reverend Lewis Thompson, longtime partner and prevention volunteer with Co-Pilots, mentor program for boys, and pastor of Antioch Baptist Church. Reverend Thompson, please.
Let us bow our heads. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you once again for the bountiful blessings that you've bestowed upon all of us, Lord. We thank you for this council. We thank you for the citizens of Longview. Father, we pray that this meeting will go decent and in order. We pray that you would bless each and every person with your wisdom, that you may be glorified. In Jesus' name we pray. We say thank God and amen. The pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless.
Thank you, Reverend Thompson. Tonight, our employee recognition, we're recognizing Officer Kendrick Montgomery. Officer Kendrick Montgomery joined the Longview Police Department on January 23rd, 2012, and patrolled the streets of Longview before being selected as a police area representative for beat 60 in July of 2015. As a par officer, Officer Montgomery is the department's liaison with the citizens in his beat to implement neighborhood improvement projects, reduce crime, and solve problems. Kendrick was recently certified as a crime prevention specialist, is a certified bike patrol officer, tactical officer, and field training officer. In July 2015, Kendrick took up the process of researching and filing a nuisance abatement case on a location within his beat that was causing the businesses and lives in the surrounding area to suffer. Although this property had illegal activities, continuous calls to police, gang activities, and arrests made, the legal complexity of enforcing a nuisance abatement case on the location called for reaching out to the Texas Attorney General's office. Officer Montgomery worked until he got Kent Richardson from the Attorney General's office to respond and determine the location needed investigated, being investigated. During the investigation, Kendrick made many calls, held a meeting with the owners with no success, and continued to obtain more documentation while the illegal activity did not stop. When a homicide occurred at this location, the owners were handed a nuisance abatement lawsuit prepared by the Attorney General's office. Months after the lawsuit was filed, the owners finally agreed to close the premises for one year, place no trespassing signage, post orders of the court prominently, and allow sign a spot compliance inspection of the city of Longview. Due to Officer Montgomery's dedicated tenacity to enforce a legally complex nuisance abatement case, there has been no recorded activity at this location since January 2016 when the lawsuit was filed. Officer Montgomery, please come forward. Ladies and gentlemen, when we say above and beyond, this is what above and beyond looks like. Officer Montgomery obviously has a full-time job, more than a full-time job, but to spend the extra time and the effort because you knew it was the right thing to do, and you knew it's what Longview needed, you know, that's what makes Longview different. And that's why we are where we are right now. And I'm telling you, from the city of Longview, but from the citizens of Longview, all we can do is say thank you, because you and all the par officers, all of our officers, every day are out there doing your thing. Your thing is not something that we want to do. And so, we thank you for doing that, and we thank you for your persistence. We thank you for not giving up, because if everyone will do that, this is the kind of results that we'll get. And when we have this kind of result in one location, the dominoes can start to fall. So, officer, from the city of Longview, from the citizens, thank you very much. We appreciate your service. What an example. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We're going now to citizen comment. I have a speaker card. Kelly Sim?
I'm just requesting to speak on my application for that special use permit.
It's in zoning?
Yeah.
We'll call you back when we get to zoning. Thank you so much. Sorry about that. And Jason Jones, you're zoning also, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Very good. Well, I have no other speaker cards. Would anybody like to speak that hasn't filled out a card yet, please? Thank you. We're to have public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Matt, council members, Mr. Willard, good evening. I'd like to start out by thanking Officer Montgomery as well. Those cases that you put together to work with the attorney generals on those nuisance abatement cases take a lot of research to do and a lot of detailed work in getting the attorneys the case to be able to file that lawsuit. So, I'd like to congratulate him as well and thank him for all the hard work that he did putting into that case. Just kind of give you a little update again. We had another busy month in July. We answered almost close to 10,000 calls for service. Almost 6,000 were dispatch calls, and then another 4,000 of officer-initiated calls for service. We made 18 felony arrests with a total of 18 charges and 178 misdemeanor arrests with a total of 365 charges during the month of July. So, it's been a busy month for us. Last Friday and Saturday night into the late evening, early morning hours, we experienced a significant amount of vandalism that was done to private property. We had some windows that were shot out and some vehicles that were painted with spray paint and graffiti. These incidents of vandalism occurred throughout the city, occurred in every police beat in the city. So, we're asking anybody that might have any information that they think might be relevant to this case to contact the police department, and also ask those that see anything suspicious going into the future that they might contact the police department and let us know if they have any further information that might be viable for us. Done a significant amount of property damage. We have just a few seats left with our Citizens Police Academy that'll be coming up beginning in September. Those classes will meet Tuesdays and Thursdays from 6:15 to 8:15. Those that would be interested can download an application at longviewtexas.gov/CPA. We'd love to have you, if you'd like to attend the academy. It's that time of the year again when we start talking about our National Night Out. That'll be coming up on the second Tuesday in October. Each year, we have a kickoff party prior to National Night Out. That'll be held Tuesday, September 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This is open to all the citizens of Longview, and we'd like to have you come by and get some information, crime prevention information, register your neighborhood crime watch group for a party, and we'll have food and drinks and a lot of different information that we can provide to the different groups. That'll be held at Maud Cobb on September 6th. I'd like to give another shout-out to our Police Explorer groups. They went to the state competition in July up in Arlington. They come back with two awards, a second-place award for the robbery scenario that they participated in, and a third-place award for the way they handled their active shooter scenario. So, we're real proud of our explorers. Every time they go off to a competition, they bring some awards back to Longview here. I'd like to invite everybody. At the end of this month, August 30th, we'll be having a retirement reception for two of our senior officers. Sergeant David Hazel, who's the sergeant on Midnight, will be retiring after 32 years of service, and Detective Gary Shirley, who works in our Crime Investigations Division on our property side, will be retiring after 27 years of service. I knew these retirements were coming. Both of these individuals will be taking positions with newly-elected Sheriff Larry Webb in Upsher County, and they're gonna move on to a second career, and I want to thank them for their service to the city. This week, we were able to surprise and honor Ms. Daisy Carey, who's been a longtime supporter of the police department and had National Night Out parties and maintained a crime watch in her neighborhood for years. Later this month, she'll turn 100 years old, so we were able to surprise her down at the Green Street Recreation Center with a cake and spend some time with her. And I hope she's watching, and I hope she knows how much that we love her and appreciate her support that she gives, not only to the police department, but her community as well. And then, I know we're two weeks out from school starting. I'd like to remind everybody that the 22nd will be the start of school here, and kind of remind everybody our school zones will be activated for our children, and we'll be out there monitoring those school zones. So, we'd like everybody to keep that in mind and drive safe during the school zones when school starts. So, with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions, council? Chief, y'all have had a busy week. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Chief Steelman.
Mayor Matt, members of council, Mr. Willard, thanks for the opportunity to update and highlight a few things that have happened in the fire department since we've last met. First and foremost, I'd like to throw a shout-out to the Longview Boys and Girls Club. Over the course of the last couple of weeks, we had several of these students that got out in some neighborhoods and did some hot fire hydrant maintenance for us by painting some hydrants that were, they were in pretty bad shape. And let me tell you the significance of having a bright yellow fire hydrant at 2:00 in the morning when you're driving down that street in the fire truck, and those headlights hit and shine and reflect off that yellow fire hydrant. It just speeds up the process of getting a water supply established to fight a structured fire. So, these kids got out. They worked really hard, had a great time doing it. I also had to give a little shout-out to Public Works and the Fire Marshal's Office for coordinating and working together. But between nine students, they painted 24 hydrants, and these were all in the area of 12th Street and Hutchings. So, all across our city, I think we have just under 4,000 fire hydrants. We typically get around to painting them. A lot of times when we're doing the neighborhood cleanup processes, or we have a group of individuals like this that just really want to get out and are looking for a good service-oriented project that helps make our community better, looks cleaner. So, certainly thanks to them. I just want to highlight again, this is a little bit of a recap from what I mentioned at our last council meeting. We continue to see an uptick in heat-related calls, heat-related illness out there. It's getting hot, and I realize that we're getting some type of a cool front this weekend, but I wouldn't put a lot of weight in that. Pay attention and monitor yourself, monitor your friends, whether you're at work or at play. Make sure you're staying hydrated and be on the lookout for any of the symptoms that you see there that may be leading you down a road of heat exhaustion or heat stroke. And again, since we last met, unfortunately, we have experienced two more arson fires in the city. One was in Council District 2, and the other was in Council District 6. We encourage the community to remain vigilant, to be on the lookout in your neighborhoods, and report any type of suspicious activity, people, or vehicles that you see. If it just looks out of place, don't hesitate to report that. We certainly won't. We need the community's help. We're trying to enlist that, because we want this to stop. So, we encourage any and all information, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chief, y'all have had a busy week also, and I appreciate what you're doing. I know y'all have had a lot of things going on. Not everybody's been safe and all the things y'all do to protect everybody. I appreciate it. And also, I thank you so much for getting these kids involved in what y'all are doing. You do it all across the city, and it's such an advantage for those kids to grow up knowing that, you know, the fire and police, they're your friends. You know, that starts right there. And so, I appreciate the involvement and the time. I know it's easier for y'all to do that, but to take the time to let those kids be involved, it makes a huge difference. So, please keep up the good work, and I appreciate all you do for them.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. We are now to consent agenda. Are there any items that the council would like to pull off for separate discussion?
No duh proof.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Not expecting that. Good. No. I just, that was not unexpected, man. Okay, budget item. Discuss the proposed 2016-2017 budget for city of Longview. Mr. Willard.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have prepared slides or comments particularly, so it's all consent, I believe, isn't it?
That means nothing has changed, and it was good from last time, so that's a good thing.
But I would be happy to answer any questions if anybody had any or...
Any question, Mr. Willard, at this point in time?
I do.
Mr. Moore.
First, kudos to you and the staff for putting together a budget that's been well-received in the community and in the press. Just a couple, three questions, and then a comment. I noticed we're purchasing a new sanitation truck. Will that be the last new piece of equipment we'll be purchasing for the new system?
Let me ask Raul McPhee, our Director of Public Works, to speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, Mr. Willard? No, this will not be the last truck that we purchase. What this is, is gets us all the frontline units for the automated collection system, which the implementation of which is set to begin in October 1st. So, it will get us, right now, we have nine. This will get us the 10th truck. And then, the sanitation vehicles are not in that fleet replacement fund that we have. So, this is the beginning of us beginning to replace our rear loader trucks that we have with some standby automated side loaders, so that we can keep consistent service in the automated program.
But this is the last one we need for our frontline?
Yes, sir. It is the last one for the frontline. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. I noticed $200,000 budgeted in economic development under contractual services. What's that for?
That is, we have a line item that we've had in for several years in that category for economic development. It has to do with what we call a 380 agreement, and local government code allows us, under Chapter 380, to do developer participations. And we utilize this most recently in two ways. The 4th Street extension that we did, that was a developer participation agreement under this type of line item, where we, the council approves participation with a developer. In that case, to have an oversized road, a four-lane instead of a two-lane. So, we participated. This particular line item is, and that was paid for out of cash reserves at that time. This particular line item, we have a developer participation agreement with Abbey Development, who did the Hawkins Street extension from 259 East to Tryon Road. And that started several years ago, and you see the result of that development. And we have a participant, it was a $500,000 agreement, and we did that to pay for the third lane. The developer was only required two lanes there, and we felt like, and the council at that time felt like it was prudent to spend that extra money to get a third lane in there. So, and we're paying that, I believe it's, the first payment was $162,500, and that was done last year. And this upcoming payment will be $112,500. So, that's what'll come out of that line item. But, and as we go forward, there'll be opportunities if council desires to, and if it's an appropriate development project in an area that council feels like we need to do more participation in some way, we have that available too. So, that's what that is. And it'll be, I think there's four total years, or three left on that agreement, I believe.
Okay. Employee health insurance costs are going up this year, and I know you all are looking at prescription med, changing plans.
Yes.
The dollar figure that's in the budget, does that include the estimated savings we're gonna get on meds?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. And then, just a comment. This last year's audit, government accounting standards required us to book our pension liabilities. And so, we had to book $62 million in the firefighters' pension fund. And it wasn't a red flag at the time, because every city in the nation is hit with the same thing. Since that time, the firefighters have voluntarily cut their benefits and have taken a 2% cut in take-home pay to increase their contributions. And then, in May of 2015, the city kicked in another percent, as I recall. So, consequently, this year's audit, that $62 million liability is gonna drop to $45 million. That said, I was fully prepared to request the council to increase the city's participation by 1% either at the beginning of the year or halfway through the year. I've thought a lot about that, and I'm not going to at this time, mainly because I'm still not comfortable with our economy. I'm not entirely comfortable with our sales tax. Our budget includes a lot of expense costs that are not sustainable. For example, equipment replacement, we cut by $1 million this fiscal year, and we're proposing to cut another million next fiscal year. Well, we can't keep that up. So, I just want to put you all on alert, if you will, that six months from now, after we've had, you know, halfway through the fiscal year, if it looks like things are picking up, if it looks like our sales tax is turning around and our expenses are good, I'm gonna come back to y'all and discuss this and possibly ask for a budget amendment to increase our participation. We need to step up to the plate, just like they have. So, anyway, thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments, Mr. Willard? Very good. We'll discuss the proposed fee resolutions. Mr. Willard.
Mayor and council, we have the fee resolutions, and there's, I think, I guess, three departments that, where we have fee resolutions that are applied to that. And I'd call each director up if you have a specific question about these fees. Building inspection, we have on your chart up there and for you some of the reasons and what it goes from and what it would be in the next budget year. Unless you want to go through each one of those, if you've looked at them, do you have any questions about those, and the directors with the appropriate fee are ready to answer any questions if you might have those?
Any questions, council? This is not an action item tonight. This is just discussion, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. If there's no questions, then we'll continue on. Thank you. And I'm assuming everybody has read these, as we got this information. Thank you. Consider resolution proposing a tax rate for 2016, scheduling two public hearings on the proposed tax rate. Ms. Cohen?
Good evening. This item is to provide public notice of the property tax rate proposed by the city and establish the two public hearings. The proposed tax rate will be .38 for maintenance and operations, 12.99 cents for debt service totaling .50.99. The two public hearings have been set for Thursday, August 25th, and Thursday, September 1st at 5:30 p.m. Approval of the resolution is requested.
Any questions? Any discussion?
Need to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Thank you. We're to zoning. We will do a public hearing on S16-02. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Matt, members of council, and Mr. Willard. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a barber shop or beauty salon in office zoning district. A specific use permit is required for this use within office zoning district to ensure no negative impacts on surrounding properties. Judson Road is an arterial, principal arterial road, which is appropriate for this type of use. Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this request with the stipulation that the applicant post ace no parking sign on the subject property, so that the tenants would not park on the adjacent, which is the property to the north, on their property. Planning and zoning and staff recommend approval with the stipulation. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
I do have the speaker card. Ms. Sim, I apologize. I see here it was written that you were here for questions only. Thank you so much. My apology. Any questions? There's a public hearing that's now open. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
No duh proof.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing on PD 16-08. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to amend PD 1514 for a hotel, to revise the site plan to allow for additional building square footage, amend parking counts, and number of driveways for a hotel located 1125 East Hawkins Parkway. This is right behind the target. The planned development site plan does propose a four-story hotel with an additional 5,725 square feet. The parking, they have reduced a little bit of the parking, but they were over on parking with the original submittal. Everything else will remain the same with an additional driveway onto the access road to the north of this plan. Planning and zoning and staff recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This does also require a public hearing, which is now open. Any speakers? Any questions of Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
No duh proof.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Jones, I want to apologize. I didn't give you a chance, but I know you were here for questions only, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. We're now to public hearing on M16-03. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The planning department is requesting to reclassify an area at the northwest corner of Hawkins Parkway and Eastman Road, also known as Hensley Park, from parks and open space to retail. Due to the redesignation of this park or the removal of the park designation, staff is recommending to amend the future land use map. As you can see on the future land use map, retail does surround this property. Therefore, it is appropriate to amend this map. Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This, once again, requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions or comments? And I would like to make note that, as Ms. Choi said, amending the future land use map is not something we do all the time, but when we see an appropriate designation for it and appropriate usage for it, then that's what we do. Because you understand, the future land use map is something that is put together, but sometimes things change. And when it changes, we have to be fluid in that change and allow for progress in development when it's appropriate. So, I appreciate y'all bringing this forward and allowing us to get this thing taken care of. So, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
No duh proof.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. We're to, items of community interest. Mr. Moore.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Ms. Snoddy.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to give Tyrone Brown a shout-out. He hosted a unity in the community event this past week in Stamper Park. That consisted of local churches getting together, playing kickball, and they had a very fun time. I also want to give a shout-out to the Teen Connection at the Boys and Girls Club. They have officially adopted Stamper Park, and really, really excited about that. Were out the other day just canvassing the area and picking up trash. So, I'm really excited that they are out in the community and very visible doing things. Also asking guys for your prayers this year. Start work tomorrow. School is back in session. So, prayers for students and staff as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
I want to begin by congratulating Officer Kendrick Montgomery. I'm proud to say he is a par officer in my district, and he has done an outstanding and amazing job. And that particular issue that he, nuisance abatement he dealt with, was in District 3. And so, we're just so blessed to have him, and he has really integrated so well into the community and with the neighbors as well. I want to also thank Mr. Raul McPhee and his staff at Public Works. All I can say is thank y'all for dealing with me and taking care of me and making me look good and taking my phone calls. But I really appreciate all that you're doing, especially, again, in District 3 over in the Rayburn area. We have another meeting coming up on Monday. These things just don't happen by osmosis. You have to have a supportive staff behind you, and so, I thank you for that. And I'm gonna piggyback on Ms. Snoddy and her babies at the Boys and Girls Club. Chi, you and Marshal Zachary over, phone calls. Ms. Williams, did you know they're painting fire hydrants? What's going on over here? And I'm like, yes, I know, because Johnny'd already told me. Thank Thank you for that. Our kids are our future and I love what the mayor said about making sure that we have these great relationships and you and I have had some really serious conversations about that and how do we further diversify our staffs? And that's where it begins. So thank you, thank your staff for all you're doing in that effort. That's it.
Ms. Ishihara.
Nothing from me.
Mr. Wright.
Yes, Chief Bishop, I know we got a few guys this week that had been involved with a shooting here back in May. And I just want to thank you. I know you hear it in the community, I hear it all the time, why has it taken so long to catch these people? There's been all these shootings and nobody's getting arrested. I want to thank you guys for doing a thorough job and not just going and nabbing the easiest prey off the streets, but you go out and find out who really did these things and, and getting the right people and I appreciate all your, the police force hard work on that.
Well said. Mr. Pertle.
I want to chat, thank Chief Stillman. His investigation department down there, his fire marshals and everything, they're really enlightening me a lot about what's going on in the construction business around here, and I'm going to be able to pass that on to a lot of the builders around here. The new codes that are coming out are going to affect us a lot and I've been down there bending their ears quite a bit. And between them and the inspection department, I think one of these days we can get the home builders on board that they'll feel a lot more comfortable and not, not think this is such a burden. So I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Willard. Well, here we go. The city pools are closing for the summer this week at their quest of Mrs. Snotty. No, I'm kidding. But there is one final event. The Dog Days of Summer will be held Saturday, August 13th from 10:00 to noon at Longview Swim Center, 1111 West Fairmont Street. For my information, call 237-1270 or go to longviewtexas.gov/parks. Downtown Live is returning to Heritage Plaza this fall. After a very successful spring series, the 100 Acres of Heritage Board is expanding the event to include seven weeks in September and October. The Free Concert Series kicks off on September 9th with musician Levi Kitchen. I am so happy to see that we're expanding it to the fall because I know y'all have gone to one of the spring and I absolutely love them. It is just an entertainment, it's a great place to get out and see your neighbors and your friends and your, your citizens of Longview. It's fantastic. Thank you all and the 100 Acres of Heritage Board for seeing the need in expanding this. This is, this is good for Longview. Thank you so much. Upcoming August events, visit longviewtexas.com. Longview World of Wonders grand opening, the 5th Annual Guthrie Creek Warm-Up Disc Golf, the Longview JC's Trade Days, East Texas Regional Artists Exhibit at the Longview Museum of Fine Arts, the 2016 Back-to-School Bike Rally, and many more. And, and I want to say one thing here, it just came to me. And, and Ms. Ishihara, you should have, I know you don't, but I will. The Backpack Back-to-School Event that you all held, the Junior League and through Buckner and First Baptist Church and all those involved, was a phenomenal, phenomenal success. Unless you can go and see the looks on these kids' faces, it's priceless. But let me tell you what's more priceless, the relief on the parents' faces when they know that their child is going to have a backpack with supplies in it and they can go and start school. And I was overwhelmed, the backpacks, the vision screening. And, and when I walked in, why did they insist on screening my vision? I don't get that. I have good vision. The haircuts, the shoes that they gave away, and I had statistics on all those things, the numbers are astounding how much effort and time was put into that event. And I know the Junior League and Kristen, you had a lot to do with that, and all those entities involved. But let me just tell you what, people lined up, they're starting at 3:30 in the morning to make sure they got a backpack for their child. That says something about us, Longview. Here's the one thing it says. We gave out 2,500 backpacks and I understand we were about 250 short, which breaks my heart. So next year, we will make sure we have 3,000 backpacks. We will give out enough backpack, I would rather have 100 left over than one too short. So, but what a, what an amazing event. I know the planning that goes on with that, the, the sheer effort, when you look at the number of volunteers that were there from so many different organizations, that's what Longview's about right there. And I just want to say thank you and to all those involved with that, it was a joy to be there. And, and you should see their, those faces are priceless. I have pictures of them, I'll show you one day. It's priceless. Let's see. Done that. Survey. Is that what's next, y'all? What's up next? Okay, survey, yeah. This is, this is really interesting to me this week. How much would you estimate our city council and city managers have reduced your city budget over the last two budget cycles? And I'm talking about these people sitting right here, so this is of Longview. Here was your answers. 36% said 750,000. 36% also said 2 million. 23% said 8 million. And 4% said 11 million. Do you know what the right answer is? It's actually 11 million. That's the actual number that this budget's been reduced in two years. 8 million is, is a number that we kind of gone by because we went from 4 and 4, but if you look at the actual total budgets from when we started two years ago to this budget cycle, we've come 11 million dollars off of that budget. That's a pretty strong number. And that reflects upon the citizens of Longview. So, and reflects upon you, you guys, David Willard, and this magnificent city staff. Which, by the way, I had a chance to meet with some of them again this week. I was at the Finance Department this week with Ms., I was with Ms. Cohen last week, I was with Ms. Miller this week, and it's really been, when you see our staff at work in their environment, doing what they do, we're, it's very impressive. We've got an amazing staff that is dedicated to their work, and when you see the dedication, that's what rolls over to this 11 million dollars. That's why, that's the why behind the how. So congratulations to you all for what you've done there. Okay, how much would you estimate the city budget was two years ago? 19% said 78 million, 19% said 107 million, 28% said 132 million, and 34% said 167 million. And of course, the correct answer is 167 million, because now we're at 156, and that's 11 million dollars. So, little information for our citizens of Longview. It's an astounding number. 167 million is a lot of money. 156 million is a lot of money. But I like to see the fact that we're reducing, not increasing. And so that shows a good fiscal responsibility that we are elected to do. So congratulations to council. I want to bring you an update on our GoGiver wheelchair accessible swings. Longview is a good place to live, I can just tell you. The response to this small endeavor has been overwhelming. We continue to get checks sent to the office, to my office, to the city of Longview, and I am, I'm overwhelmed. I got some more checks this week. Ms. Karen Main's donated this week. My mom, Marion Mack, donated this week. We had some donations that wished to not be presented up here, but I can tell you this, we're trying to raise $48,000, basically $50,000 for this endeavor. And I think, oh, the Pilot Club also donated a swing this week, which is just fantastic. I can tell you, we're right about $3,000 short of our goal. And I can assure you before next council meeting, this GoGiver wheelchair fund will be closed. So you can, you can take that to the bank. Book Club. Who read it? Be honest. Thank you, thank you. Dog House. Goldfish.
I listened to it.
Listen to it, same thing?
I read it.
Okay, okay. It's an interesting book, isn't it? It's very simple, but it's a very interesting book. Do we have a video? Okay, go ahead. It's been said, the more things change, the more they stay the same. Isn't that the truth? I pride myself on being someone who is adaptable, willing to take things as they come. But to be honest, it's not always that way. Probably the biggest wave of change in my life came as my kids graduated high school and moved off to begin their college careers. Kelly and I had built our lives around raising these little people to be adults, and we always knew it would happen. But it was one of the biggest changes we had ever experienced. We had a decision to make each time one of our kids moved out on their own. Be swallowed up in sadness or find the joy in knowing it was time for these wonderful individuals to forge their own path. We are now facing new changes as our kids, one by one, move back home to begin their careers. We're thrilled to have them home, but are navigating new waters once again. But isn't that what makes life fun and exciting? It'd be so boring if every day was the same as the one before. So how many of you all have had waves of change in your lives? Have anyone not? We all, we all experience these waves of change. And, and the way you deal with those times of change is what kind of defines who you are and what you are. And as I said in the video, those were, those were big changes for Kelly and I. You know, people that came up to us and said, oh, you're going to love empty nesting because now you and your wife get to reconnect. And I look at them and I go, we never disconnected. There's no reconnect involved. You know, you, you spend your lives taking care of your children and being involved in their lives and, and living with them and through them, and then when they leave, it's a void that it's very difficult to fill. You know, you, two people are trying to fill the void of five and it's, it just doesn't work. So it was very difficult for us, but, but that's what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to adapt and we're supposed to be thankful that they are able to go and forge a path and do their thing. And then we're also so thankful that they're, they're deciding to come back home again. So those are, those are times in your life when you look and you, you say to yourself, how, how shall I handle this? And that decision that you make when that road forks is where, is where you are in your, in your character. And so, this book is very interesting to me as, as I read through it. I've read it three or four times now because, the first time I read it, I just looked at the pictures. I'm just kind of the way I am, I'm visual. But seeing, seeing how this little goldfish and this shark have come together in diametrically opposed positions and the way they're forging ahead, very, very interesting. Any, any comments?
I'll buy your book.
Okay. I actually have two of them now. And you can get them at Barron's, I know for sure. I'm not sure if Books and Men has them.
They do.
They do.
They do, good. So, and please shop those local stores. We want to support local stores, but pick it up, read it. We had a great response Monday night at our book club. I know some of you out there were in, in the discussion, I appreciate your participation. So we'll continue to do that every Monday night at 7 o'clock online, and we'll continue to discuss this book each week for, or each of our councils for four council meetings. So that's how we'll conclude that. Anything else? If not, we are adjourned.